Good evening. Today is October 3, 2022. At 7:00 PM here in the City Council Chambers at City Hall for the regular meeting of the City Council. Call the meeting to order and entertain a roll call.
Go for it.
Here.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkhouse.
Here.
Kangas.
Present.
Rothie.
Present.
Schneider.
Here.
And Myers is absent.
Excellent. Move to item C is the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Move into item E, Approval of the Minutes. Approval of the Agenda, sorry. D.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Drinkhouse, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Now move into item E, the Approval of the Minutes. Entertain a motion there.
I'll move approval of the September 12, 2022, regular minute, uh, meeting minutes and the September 19, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Schneider. Counsel discussion?
I would just note that the September 12 meeting minutes are amended or corrected. We missed the vote on that, on the minutes, so, for the 12th, so.
Okay. All right. Anything further?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section F is our guest counsel person. Carolina Wilson has joined us this evening. Um, I understand you're only five blocks away.
Yeah.
Uh, so a nice leisurely walk down this evening, so.
Yes, super nice.
Um, you're the guest of, uh, counsel then Rothie here. If you have anything to introduce first.
Well, you know, we met in the neighborhood and, and, uh, I've have bugged her a couple of times to do this, and the timing was right for this month, so I'm glad she's joining us.
Perfect. Do you have any introduction you'd like to provide?
Well, I've been a Waverly resident for over 25 years, and I am the Secretary of the University of Northern Iowa in the Distance Education Department.
Okay, excellent. I just know that you've been involved in, in city discussions and stuff, and it's wonderful to have you join us.
I try.
Good, good. Um, you know the rules of engagement, so we'll carry forward, so welcome. Move into section G, Public Hearing. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing for a review of plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Cedar River Park Baseball Softball Development Phase III Project. Have we received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Perfect, thank you. Um, any public comments from anybody that's joined us this evening? Seeing nobody rise, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 22-126, approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of $1,055,000 for the Cedar River Park Baseball Softball Development Phase III Project.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Kangas. Counsel discussion or staff?
Um, I do have a question. It looks like there was several alternates that were additional costs, and it looks like it is for an upgrade from vinyl to, uh, prefinished wood. Um, my first question, I guess, is that stained wood? Is it painted? Can you give me a little bit more information about that?
So, let's see what it actually is. So according to, uh, our architect, it'll be more durable. It should be, um, it's a prefinished wood, so I guess I don't know if that means if it's, you know, painted, sealed, whatever it is, but it's a prefinished wood. Uh, it'll be, like I said, more durable and easier upkeep than what the vinyl would be. And so, we obviously went with it on all of the packages that we could because we're not gonna mix and match and take it on some and not on others.
This was the original spec when we bid it the first time, and the prices came in so high. One of the options of trying to lessen that cost was to back that out, but when we were able to look at the cost differences, once the bids were done, it was somewhat minimal to add that back and again, increase that durability, especially with the weather elements, the occasional ball knocking off the side of it. This will take that much, much better, and that's why most of the alternates that were done increased that durability and life of this, so we are not having to maintain near as much going forward. So, this was originally what it was supposed to be, and they lessened it to try and help the cost, but in the end, one of them actually cost more than when we went back to the original. So it netted out pretty well for us.
My original thought was to amend this resolution to not go for the upgrade, but I did talk to a couple different contractors, and they did say that as long as it's painted, it would be more durable, the stained, if it's just stained, um, you would have to do some upkeep every couple of years, and that would be kind of a, a lot of work for you guys, added on to, to you guys. Um, so I think that was my concern also with the vinyl, um, that yes, if it was in that direct line of that ball, having to replace that, it would crack easier, although it's, uh, maintenance free, so, um, just a little education, I guess, to people that are listening. Um, that's probably why we are going with the wood then. Um.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a, what I feel like is an embarrassing question. Um, can you explain to me again the role of the $700,000 limit, that we were only allowed to spend so much, and what kind of money was that that we were only allowed to spend $700,000 of?
So when you look at the Iowa Code, um, there is a section that talks about, uh, essential corporate, different types of things that you can do, whether it's playgrounds or pools or, uh, in this case, a new park. Existing parks, different completely, for whatever reason. I don't understand it either, it's just the law. So new parks, swimming pools, all these things, things have a certain limit that you can borrow based on our population without going to a referendum, and the limit is $700,000. If we were bigger, it's not actually that much more. Uh, and the point of that is to just not go and do a whole ton of things for amenities, et cetera. They wanna truly have a, a cap or a limit to keep people, uh, involved, so that you're not spending millions and millions and millions of dollars on these things. So $700,000 was the limit because this was a new park, and the athletic side of it also helped it look at not an existing park of any sort. Um, I don't think the core was park-like before it was, so we couldn't really get that through. Um, so that was the cap. It's just the way the law is written. We didn't have a choice but to spend the $700,000, and that is GO bond only, straight GO bond. Other bonds, which may be how we may cover this, you can do revenue bonds of a certain sort. There is a hybrid you can do slash GO backer. It's, there's a lot of fun stuff we can get into, but, uh, we will figure out how to best fund it, the best funds to use for it, and move forward, but, uh, but that is why the $700,000 existed. It is just the way the law is written.
So is that only for phase one? Now that we're in phase three, it doesn't apply? Or is that saying that for this phase three, we're not using general obligation bonds?
Project as a whole.
Okay.
$700,000 total.
So when this is coming out of the capital improvement funds, we won't be paying for it with general obligation bonds?
Can't.
Okay. But, so, I mean, but, but that's the role of that $700,000, is basically saying it won't be coming out of general obligation bonds. We can fund it with other things, perhaps like tax levy or the capital improvement funds.
Yep, local office of sales tax, uh, local office of sales tax bonds.
Okay, but we can't, but we can't bond for it?
You can bond for it, it's not general obligation bonds.
Correct.
We have to go to.
You are correct. Do we have to go to a referendum if you want?
Yep.
Other bonds for it?
Other GO bonds.
Oh, GO bonds.
There is a difference, so other GO bonds, general obligation bonds.
As long as we're discussing funding for this project, um, can you explain a little bit about where the funds that were raised by the, um, uh, baseball group is, is going to go and how that's gonna be spent?
Uh, it has been spent on the entire first and second phase. When you look at the turf and the fencing that's out there, the shuckapi, the grass, you see, all, everything you see today, it funded that, and it's continued to come in to finish funding that. We always knew that the third and final vertical infrastructure was gonna be hopefully grant-driven, possible more fundraising, but we're looking more grant-driven. But in the meantime, we can't really front a million dollars in hope, so we may have to go to the market, get this, pay it back using, if additional funds come in, that to offset our payments, but our whole goal is, and I've been like this since the day it started, we have a way to fund it on our own. Grants and that, it's nice, but I can't depend on that because it may not come. And so, same way we did the park, we had 11 million. We found a way to do it ourselves because the federal grants weren't coming, and we never did end up getting them because it was so competitive. This will be the same way. We will find a way to get this done. Anything we receive back will be a bonus to help offset what we've done, but if we truly want to get this finished by April, which I think everybody does, there's not a lot of choice. We will front it and find a way to get it paid back and go forward.
Were these bids better than what we got in the spring?
Over half a million better.
Good.
So, yes, over half a million better with multiple bidders.
I knew there was a reason we didn't see the bids this spring.
Well, we had one, and it wasn't a great one, and even that bid was over half a million better coming in, so.
So, which of our bidders this time was the previous, was the bidder of the last time?
I'd rather not say.
Fair enough.
We didn't bring it forward.
Fair enough.
I don't wanna talk about that, but, uh, but we had great bids. We had five bidders. One chose to only do one piece, three different ones, one multiple pieces of it, which we're hopeful will mean that they can all start working together at the same time. Instead of having one bidder having to prioritize one after the other and the next, we hope it'll go much faster this way.
Are they likely to be getting in each other's way?
Shouldn't. Uh, different buildings, different areas, different concepts, so they should be able to go at the same time.
Should be able to start this fall?
We start October 18. If we approve the bonds and the contract and everything else, they can get going right now. I hope, some will, so I'm sure it'll be supply chain, do they have materials or not. I know the park that we're gonna try and finish, there's a little bit of that we have to figure out because some of those pieces are customized. That may take till the spring, but at least the buildings get going. If they truly hit their deadline, April 30, this will be finished and open, and that's the goal. So, they all claim it's not an issue to get it done. So we're happy to see that going forward to get this finalized.
I'm glad we held out on that. I know that's not a pleasurable thing to do, but that's.
It was a hard decision.
A ton of dollars, yeah.
I mean, we knew the money was.
But you could feel it in your gut that it just wasn't right this spring, so.
No, it was not, not good at all, and so to come in over half a million less, we're very happy with the bids that came, and the competition drove that. Like I said, four full bidders. Everybody we've known and dealt with, we know these big people. To have them all, get a piece of this was good as well, so I think it was a good distribution of where their focus is. Um, some bid much better on one part, not as much on the other, and so by able to take the alternates one at a time, we were able to get the best out of all of them and then put together a much lower price than any one of them could have put together. Um, so in the end, this is about as good as it could have gotten.
I like the general location of where we got bidders from.
Yep.
Local, relatively local anyway, so. Anything further?
Hearing nothing further, roll call.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Myers. Oh, sorry, Chief absent. Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and.
Rothie.
You got one more. Sorry.
I vote yes.
That's what I did.
I was pretty sure you were going to.
Sorry.
A motion, or on a vote of six to zero and one absent, um, the Resolution 22-126 is approved. Brings us to item 1A, Resolution 22-127, Resolution approving and awarding bid package number one for dugouts and handrails for the Cedar River Park Baseball Softball Development Phase III Project. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 22-127, approving and awarding bid package number one for donuts, I'm sorry, dugouts and handrails for the Cedar River Park Baseball Softball Development Phase III Project to Cardinal Construction of Waterloo, Iowa for the bid amount of $257,300.
Second.
Motion by Drinkhouse, second by Bowfer. Counsel discussion?
Chief absent.
Rich perked up.
Maybe I'll throw a dozen in, but I don't know about a quarter million dollars worth of donuts.
It's a lot of donuts.
It's a lot of donuts.
Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-127 is approved. Item 1B, Resolution 22-132, Resolution approving and awarding bid package number two for the maintenance building and alternate number one for prefinished wood siding for the Cedar River Park Baseball Softball Development Phase III Project. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 22-132, approving and awarding bid package number two for the maintenance building in the amount of $179,500, and alternate number one for prefinished wood siding in the amount of $7,200 for Cedar River Park Baseball Softball Development Phase III Project to Stegy Construction of Waverly, Iowa for the bid amount of $186,700.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Kangas. Counsel discussion?
Again, I'm hoping this is gonna be painted siding so that, uh, there's less maintenance for you guys.
All right. Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-132 is approved. Brings us to item 1C, Resolution 22-133, Resolution approving and awarding bid package number three for press boxes, bid package number four for restrooms and concession stand, alternate number one for bid package three for prefinished wood siding, and alternate number one for bid package number four for prefinished wood siding for the Cedar River Park Baseball Softball Development Phase III Project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 22-133, approving and awarding bid package number three for press boxes in the amount of $240,000. Bid package number four for restrooms and concession stand in the amount of $350,000. Alternate number one for bid package number three for prefinished wood siding in the amount of $14,000, and alternate number one for bid package number four for prefinished wood siding in the amount of $7,000 for the Cedar River Park Baseball Softball Development Phase III Project to Mott Construction of Sumner, Iowa for the bid amount of $600,000, $611,000.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Schneider. Counsel discussion? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-133 is approved. Brings us to section H, Public Comments. For items not on the agenda, please submit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Are there any council comments this evening? All right, we'll move forward to section I, Consent Calendar. The following items will be acted upon by voice, voted on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item number one is a pay request from WHKS for Waverly Water Pollution Control Facility, WPCF, improvements for $20,689.19. Item two is a pay request from WHKS for Waverly State Revolving Fund, SRF, sponsored project for $1,572.48. Item three is a pay request from Hall &amp; Hall Engineers Incorporated for the Youth Baseball and Softball Complex, Cedar River Park, for $1,084.50. And item four is a pay request from MSA Professionals Incorporated for Waverly Comprehensive Plan, Bike and Pedestrian Trail Plan, and Park and Open Space Plan Project for $20,000. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Drinkhouse. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section J is our regular business, item number one. Resolution 22-128, A Resolution Approving Isolved Contract, 12-Month Term for Cobra Administration, and Approving the City Administrator James W. Bronner to Sign for the City of Waverly. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution 22-128, approving dissolved contract 12-month term for Cobra Administration with implementation fee being waived and the annual subscription fee being 55 cents per active benefits eligible employee or a minimum of $500 annually, whichever is greater, and authorizing City Administrator James W. Bronner to sign for the City of Waverly.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Rothie. Counsel discussion?
So we've been trying to do this in-house, and if anybody deals with Cobra, you know how nasty that is, and for this fee, it seemed like a good, good idea to get away from the restrictions and regulations and the just, let's let somebody else who does this for a business do it instead. It was getting to be a little overwhelming. We were holding onto it, but I think this is a much better deal for us going forward. It's a lot less time and effort on staff to try and keep up with all this because it is constantly changing. So that's the premise of bringing this to, to you for a one-year term.
And presumably, we're gonna be paying the $500 annually because I think we have less than 1,000 employees?
Yeah, I think it's the minimum. I don't think we're gonna be above that, so.
It's 55 cents a month, so that would, right?
I'm rounding.
Okay.
It's not exact. Maybe 900 employees, but.
Well, you, you also are taking care of a lot of compliance issues that you don't want to have on your shoulders.
You've got that very correct.
It's a wide range.
Yes.
It's overwhelming when you start really digging into what this truly is, and no thanks. This is a much better situation.
The deadlines are so specific and, and immutable that if you miss a deadline and you have a lawsuit because of that, the, uh, you know, consequences are immense, so it's just not something, unless you do this all the time, it's not something you really want to handle yourselves.
Yeah, I don't think $500 is gonna cover the lawsuit, so. We thought this was a good route to go and just get us out of the compliance part of it, and, and it's just getting real interesting lately, so we just wanted to get away from it as fast as we could, as far away as we could, so.
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-128 is approved. Item two, Resolution 22-129, A Resolution Approving Change Order Number Three, Accepting the Cedar River Park Bid Package Two, and Approving Pay Estimate Number Nine as Final Payment. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 22-129, approving change order number three in the amount of a $10,638.97 decrease, accepting the Cedar River Park Bid Package Two, project as complete, and approving pay estimate number nine in the amount of $102,696.44 as final payment to Cardinal Construction of Waterloo, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Counsel discussion? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-129 is approved. Item three is Resolution 22-130, A Resolution Setting a Public Hearing to Approve a Lease Agreement between the City of Waverly and the Waverly Shellrock Soccer Association for the Waverly Soccer Complex. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 22-130, setting a public hearing at 7:00 PM on October 17, 2022, in the council chambers at City Hall to approve a lease agreement between the City of Waverly as lessor and the Waverly Shellrock Soccer Association as lessee for the Waverly Soccer Complex.
Second.
Motion by Drinkhouse, second by Bowfer. Counsel discussion?
Wait, no.
I was just gonna say, it might be helpful to have some background on this. It's sort of complicated over the years.
So what happens is, um, after the contracts were paid off by the soccer association to the landowners that they purchased the land from, um, the agreements that were signed many years ago said that they would then transfer the property to the city, and the city would enter into a long-term lease with the association. The terms are basically set forth in, in those agreements from the prior years. We tried to just kind of work them in, um, because they, they were somewhat redundant at times, and, um, but we've got it down to, I think, pretty close to the final version. There's, there's a few small things that we're looking at, because we were trying to hurry up to get this set for the 17th, so we could finalize the, a few details. But this would just basically allow the soccer association to operate as they have been operating and to maintain it as they have been maintaining it, um, to do the, the same types of activities they've been doing. Um, we put some language in that the city's allowed to do certain things, but there's really no plan at this point for the city to, to do anything on its own at the soccer complex. It would only matter if there's changes that occurred, um, to maybe the, the, the way we do our, um, junior leagues. The things that Wortburg's doing now, if something happened, it changed that. But otherwise, it should just look seamless and shouldn't be much different than what, um, it has been in the past.
I think one issue that's been raised by citizens in the past is that there are some campers stored down there, and it looks like under .4 that the facilities can only be used for, for public use, not private, so I presume those owners will be moving them, those campers.
My understanding is that, that, and, and at the conference that I went to, there was a, a, an actual, um, conference, uh, thing that, uh, we talked about allowing a nonprofit to, eh, take money from the city or to take property from the city to use for the public benefit, which is what we really have here. And one of those things was that it has to be all for public benefit. Um, and so, we use that language intentionally for that purpose.
Yeah, it's certainly been a nice partnership. I mean, they've, they've done a great job maintaining those fields. City occasionally does some work, but I think it's important for us to be consistent.
Sure.
Across public property that it's not used for storage.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm just gonna piggyback on that, is that I've been contacted over the years by a number of different people about the campers there. Since the city didn't own the property, I didn't really push it, but I think at this point, um, you know, once this gets taken care of, we really need to ask those people to, to find a different place to put their campers, unless the campers are there because it's required because of the soccer, that they're, and I don't think that's the case. I think the people are just leaving them there, so.
All right. Anything further? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-130 is approved. Item number four is Resolution 22-131, A Resolution Approving the Bid for the Coleman Park Parking Lot Paving Project. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 22-131, approving the bid from James Concrete of Waverly, Iowa in the amount of $15,900 for construction at the Coleman Park Parking Lot.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Drinkhouse. Counsel discussion, if any?
This is the parking at the north side of, of Coleman Park, so, because that's the only parking lot I'm aware of that's at Coleman.
That's correct.
All right. Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-131 brings us to item number five. Resolution 22-134, A Resolution Approving Contract Bonds and Certificate of Insurance from Stegy Phase One and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution twenty-two dash one thirty-four, approving the contract, bonds and certificate of insurance from Stegy Construction of Waverly, Iowa in the amount of three hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars for the Parks Maintenance Building Remodel Project Phase One and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Motion by Drago, second by Bergen, council discussion if any.
What's the estimated time that this will take to get it done?
So we'd like them to get started as soon as possible. We know that they probably won't get started until mid to late November, possibly in the December, and we're expecting a four-month construction period for it.
Goal will be to be done by spring when everything really picks up and, you know, hopefully remodeled out.
So staff will be able to, they'll be able to work around staff so they can still use some of their office space?
Yeah, the office space will be difficult, but they, Paul's got it all planned out as to where we're going to move stuff, where people will be, and, you know, how things will work out.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, nothing further, roll call Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Both for.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, resolution twenty-two dash one thirty-four is approved. Brings us to section K, item number one, under reports from boards and commissions, is the Historic Preservation Commission minutes of July twenty-fifth, twenty-two. Item two, board of adjustments minutes from August eighth of twenty-two, both received into the record. Brings us to section L, staff updates, Mr. Bronner.
I don't think we have anything tonight, sir.
All right, moves us over to city council comments, Mr. Bergen.
So I saw in the news the town of Zering, Iowa, which has a population of over five hundred, which failed to turn in their twenty twenty-two budget, and as a result, they forfeited all of their property taxes and didn't have money to fund their roadworks projects. And it's just a, well, it's a, it's a bit of a mess, shall we say. And I just wanted to say how happy I am that we have professional staff, James Bronner among them, who make sure we get our paperwork done on time, that we have wonderful bond ratings, and just how glad I am that we have people who know what they're doing. Just when that sort of thing happens, it reminds me how happy I am to live in a place that is well-run like Waverly. And I want to ask anyone who wants to join me for a beer afterwards, I will be at the beach house after the city council meeting.
They should have just stuck with being known for the forty-horse hitch.
That was an unfortunate issue of miscommunication, lack of follow-through, and this is what happened, so, yeah. But you are correct, they forfeited any gains they would have had, had to go back to the last year's tax, and that was it. And that was not adequate, so it does happen. That's why we do the hearings, that's why we do everything we do is to make sure that's done right because that's what happens.
Both for?
No comments, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Well, and I'm old enough to remember before we had a city administrator, and I remember how happy people, well, some people weren't when we started hiring, but it was definitely a good idea. So let's see, Oktoberfest is this coming weekend, starts Friday afternoon, runs through Saturday, so hopefully everyone will get out there. It's going to be chilly, so bring a wrap. Also, we, on Saturday, we had our last day at the community garden, pulled out all the tomato plants, which I took immense pleasure in. We had way too many tomatoes, but we topped fourteen thousand pounds of produce this year. So Ron is basking in glory, Ron Lenth from ISU Extension. And the most faithful people out there were Ron and Dave Arnz, retired math teacher, and Bill Decker, so. But we had a good group, and so hopefully we can do it again next year. But thanks to city staff too for mowing and weed whacking and whatever else they do out there.
And I know you definitely put in your time.
Yeah, it's very therapeutic for me to get out there and work on that after work, so I enjoyed it.
Excellent. Mr. Schneider?
I know council has been contacted by a number of, or Sherry Molis has contacted a number of us on council. I don't know if you got forwarded that, Adam, but in regards to the flashing yellow rapid pedestrian beacon signs. And I wanted to dig into that a little bit more because, I mean, I have the same concern. I've heard the same concern kind of over and over again, and I wanted to find out a couple of things. Number one is, is there a false sense of security that would lead fatalities at a higher rate versus not having anything? And second, if we put red there, what would any difference make? So I spent a couple of hours digging in on research, and the good news is that these, there's quite a bit of research, these yellows things, they've only been out there like since two thousand nine. So they're fairly new. But every piece of research shows that fatality chances go down, crashes go down, everything looks good there. Eighty percent plus of people will stop at those when they, when they see the lights and a pedestrian, eighty percent will stop. And of course, it's not a hundred, and that's, that's where the concern comes in. And I think the alarming thing there is if we were to sit and watch the same intersections without any control, we would see probably more alarming things than if we saw the alarming things with control. I think, I think what happens is we see the control flashes and it puts a spotlight on it for everybody. But, you know, we still need to do a better job there. There is a difference on the red beacons, not as much as I had thought, but I'm also not looking at apples to apples as far as where the placement is and where they're doing the numbers. But the rectangular rapid yellow ones in reduced crashes by forty-seven percent. The red beacons will reduce pedestrian crashes fifty-five percent. Of course, they're at higher speeds, so we're not comparing apples to apples. I think the good news is that, you know, we know the yellow beacons do have some, you know, vast improvement, but it's not a hundred percent. And I think that's something we all need to keep in mind and keep the education going out there and look at for potential improvements. If we're looking at a crossing at the ball field ever, you know, at forty-five miles an hour, you couldn't put the yellows on there because I think that's, those are for forty and under only. So either have to reduce speed limit there or look at the reds. But anyway, just wanted to report my two hours of research, that's what I found there, so.
It's good research.
Thank you, Mr. Drago.
I'll just piggyback, I'm going to continue to push for a pedestrian-activated stoplight on the crossing on the parkway between the ball diamonds and the soccer fields. That will, you'll hear me bring that up in all of the budget meetings that we have here this fall.
Thank you, sir.
I'm warning.
Foreshadowing.
Yes.
Go that route. Ms. Wilson? Nothing?
Nope.
All right, maybe next time.
Maybe.
All right, Mr. Angus.
No, I was just going to equitacarotie on Oktoberfest, so hopefully I'll get a chance to get out there. Friday night's going to be a long ways away, so I won't make it Friday night. Saturday, I might be able to enjoy some, so it's a good time.
Okay. Yes, Oktoberfest, we do have some guests from across the pond coming over. I'll be able to be there on Friday evening. Don't know what my schedule looks like for Saturday, but I won't be there Saturday evening unfortunately due to an absence planned. But lots of events this past weekend, the Fall Fest, we had twenty games of softball from various people all over the place. Cross-country meet, Whortburg had something like fourteen or seventeen events going on. It was just crazy busy, so a lot has happened, is going to happen this week. Right now, we're going into the horse sale out at the sale barn, so hopefully we get people riding their horses into Oktoberfest and hanging out, who knows? But yeah, a lot going on, so just engage. And as always, our Waverly nice always shines through when we have guests in town, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
Aye, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Angus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, we are adjourned, thank you.